Go live. All right, so we're here with Jim Leary, running for second ward council.
Yes, sir.
All right. You've got a, you've run, you've been a, been in Greece government before, run for office in Greece before.
Yes, sir.
I want to thank you for joining us, you know.
My pleasure.
You know, I think one of the biggest issues that we've had in Greece, especially recently, is just people aren't informed, especially on, when it comes to local politics. People really don't know who they're voting for and what's going on. So I think these interviews are very important and I truly do appreciate you coming on. First and foremost, can you tell us about yourself, your history, background, you know?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to thank you and your wife for putting this on, taking the time on a Saturday to conduct these. You've got a long day that you do interviews. So I truly appreciate it, opening your house for us and allowing us to reach the voters. As you said, it's a good way to know the individual candidate, to ask some questions and get some truthful, honest answers. So first of all, I was born and raised here, lived all my life in the town of Greece, mostly off of Lata Road. My parents had a house on Lata between Alpine and the railroad tracks there. So I lived about the first thirty years there. And then when I got married, I moved out to my current address out around the Lata Long Pond area. I attended Holy Cross School, after that I went to Cardinal Mooney, went to MCC, Rochester Institute of Technology. I graduated in December of eighty-six from the Regional Public Safety Training Center as a certified police officer. My wife and I got married at our Mother Saros Church, have been a Christianer and member for over thirty years there. During my time of college and summers and, and my senior year in the high school, I had all kinds of odd jobs in the town of Greece. I worked at Neisner's began where it was located in the strip plaza where the current Wegmans Mountain Boulevard store is. And there was a Chase Pickens in there, I believe, a bank. So I worked in food service, I worked as a cashier, I worked in sports department. I used to work after school from six at night till ten, Monday through Friday, and then an occasional Saturday and Sunday there. I worked at Washburn Sunoco, which used to be at the corner of Dewey and Lata. I worked at Bonin's, um, gas station at Edgemere in Long Pond. I worked for a gentleman called Bud Bydick. He had a garbage collection route, we worked mostly in, in around the corner. And just a little segue to that is, it's not like it is today. Back then we had those big green, like fifty-five gallon drum and a push cart. And you had to go up everybody's driveway. And when the summer was, it was okay, it was hot and sweaty, but in the winter it was blowing snow and you didn't clear the driveway or walkway. And you can have things like garbage lighters, I mean, it's just raw garbage and you had to put it in there. You had to walk it to the truck, you had to lift it up and put it in, as you can see, I'm not a big husky guy. So that was kind of what, you started early in the morning, you were done by nine or ten, and it paid well, so. And then one summer, one of the guys at the police department had a tree service. So I worked for him and that was quite interesting because you learned what the terminology of widow maker was. And you had to be careful of how they were gonna fall. And every once in a while, things didn't, didn't go the way they were planned, so. Then after that, I started getting serious about my employment. And after I graduated or got out of RIT, before I went to the training center, I worked it eight years at Eastman Kodak Company, they had an elm growth plant. I worked, uh, first four years I was in security, working a variety of different jobs there, different locations, dock, entry points, manufacturing things where product were constantly coming in and out. I worked at the different plants, Hawkeye, Lincoln Plant, so on and so forth. Then my last four years, I was in industrial relations in the training department. Cause I had a background in first aid, so I would teach CPR, basic first aid, advanced first aid, to different employees that were in high level, high risk areas, even though they had a medical department. But it was kind of like around here, sometimes it was six, seven minutes for medical to reach the person. So they tried to limit that and have employees trained in certain areas. So then during that, after my senior year at RIT, I was fortunate to get a internship with the Greece Police Department. And after that, they asked me if I wanted to become a part-time dispatcher. And my goal is to work for them, so as soon as they offered me that. So it's kind of hard, I worked Monday through Friday at Kodak and then I usually work a Friday overnight or Saturday overnight as a police dispatcher. So my social time was kind of very limited. And, uh, but it was a great learning experience because I had the business end of things and I had the police aspect of things. And it sounds kind of funny, but they were all problem solving. Because as a dispatcher back then, you had to pick up the phone, listen to what the person was saying, and then try to problem solve, is this something we can handle? Do I have to refer it to a different agency, an outside agency like animal control? Or a tow agency, or some sort of social help agency? We had different agencies we could refer people to. And that was a high-pressure job because you had the phone and then you had the radio and the dispatch. And sometimes you were talking to people, but the car didn't know what you were doing. So a car would call in and say, hey, can you run this plate? Or can you run a record check on this person? And you were constantly multitasking. And of course, overnights, there was some downtime, but it was very interesting at that. So I was hired in March of eighty-six as a full-time police officer. But during my time, I gave back to the community. I joined the special police out of college. I was a member of the Lake Shore Fire Department and I achieved the rank of lieutenant. I volunteered at Greece Volunteer Ambulance in all the capacities. I was a driver, medic, dispatcher, crew chief, advanced life support, technical assistant. The crew chief was kind of very interesting. From Sunday to Sunday, one week a month, you were basically in charge of everything from that day. So if somebody complained about some sort of service, they called you for it. If one of the ambulances or advanced life support vehicles had some sort of a mechanical problem, a problem with stocking, equipment, lighting, you had to find some sort of service agency to come in or take it to and make sure it went there. The biggest responsibility is you were in charge to make sure that at least one basic life support ambulance and hopefully one advanced life support fly vehicle or fly car was staffed twenty-four, seven for that seven-day period. If somebody at the last minute called in sick, it was your responsibility to give a fill-in, or a lot of times you did it yourself. So that one week was very, very hectic. And I was a red cross instructor in basic and advanced life, or not advanced life, advanced first aid. And I was also a CPR instructor, cardio pulmonary resuscitation for the American Heart Association. Some of my other volunteer duties were, I was a coach, volunteer coach, and a board of directors for the Greece Police Athletically for several years. And that was very tedious, logistically trying to put a football schedule together with twenty individuals on the team, four teams, practices, games, getting in referees to referee the game, getting all the equipment there, the down markers, the chains, wire, stuff like that. And then I did the same thing with my girls for Greece Girls Soccer League. I started out first as a, as a volunteer coach, went on to join the board of directors to become a fields coordinator. Back then, we had anywhere from twelve to eighteen to twenty girls on the team. We had over a hundred teams, just for Greece Recreation. And to be honest with you, scheduling was a nightmare. If you had a summer like this where it was dry, it was fine. But you had two or three days where you got washed out and now you had to reschedule games and notifying the coaches and having the players. And then during the summer, certain girls would take off on vacation, other teams would be low or short on their numbers and you had to have a minimum number to start a game and then getting the referees there. So, and then the last thing I just want to talk about is my twenty-nine years on the, on the road patrol. Seventeen of those years were spent working the night shift. And back then, that was ten at night till six in the morning. I really enjoyed that because back in those days, you were basically the police officer. We had seven sectors, we had a car in each sector, and we had maybe a technician and maybe a rover. But during the summer, during vacation, in what they call downtime, where if you worked over four hours, you would do four hours off and get paid for it. And staffing levels, we had a minimum. So you went on a lot of jobs by yourself, went on a lot of jobs with you and maybe one supervisor. If you had two cars or three cars, boy, that was a real, you know, kind of like Christmas gift. And then my last nine years before I retired, I was in the community services unit. In there, there was a whole, again, menagerie of different things. It was mostly problem solving. It was not the legal aspect, but using other resources to try to mitigate situations in the town. But when I was on the road, I was a school resource officer, a field training officer, where you get a new recruit out of the academy for roughly twelve weeks, four weeks with different field training officers. Breath test operation, operator for alcohol impairment, or driving under the influence. I was assigned, people may laugh, but we had a marine unit back in the late seventies and early eighties because we had nine miles of waterfront. And I was assigned to the marine unit, the Alcohol Control Task Force. I was the coordinator for the Neighborhood Watch Program. We had twenty-one individual neighborhood watch groups. Sometimes they had five or six individual members in and upwards of twenty to thirty. And they would have periodic meetings, I would go there, I would run crime stats and calls for service. If there was a particular issue or problem, try to find a way of giving them some sort of relief in different avenues in the town. People don't realize there's so many different things that you can turn to. You can turn to the Environmental Protection Agency, you can talk to or call Code Compliance. There's a town code, it has all kinds of different chapters in it. Different resource groups that you can refer people to. And I was a crime prevention officer, command post operator, public information officer. That one was very challenging to me. On my first day, very first day on the job, was the day Mr. Fort Carroll was murdered on North Avenue. He owned a pool, pool business on the corner of North Avenue and Ridge. The reason I say that was interesting was we knew who the victim was, the news through their investigative channels knew. But the problem that we had, or that I had, was they wanted me to confirm who the victim was. They did not know, but I knew his teenage daughter was on a school field trip, leaving Albany, returning to Rochester. Back then, nobody, very few people had cell phones. We knew the route they were taking, but there was no way of communicating to the bus. We were fearful that once we released the name, if they pulled into a rest stop where somebody had a radio station on and the news broke in that his teenage daughter would hear the demise of her father being murdered through a news media outlet. And the one thing that his wife wanted was to make sure that that daughter was notified properly by the proper authorities before we release the name. So I got to work at eight and I had to hold off the media till probably three or four in the afternoon. And you know how they are, when they're throwing winks in your face and asking you all kinds of questions. They knew and I knew the answer, but I had to keep telling them and stonewalling them. And, and to do that and for the sanctity that the family wanted to make sure that she was properly notified.
You think they'd have respected, especially back then when the media was, you know, halfway decent.
But I couldn't tell them I knew. Because once I tell them that I know, then they're gonna say, well, wait a minute, on her freedom of information, you gotta tell us. You know, they'll play that game. And so to tell them that, I say, well, we haven't positively identified the victim yet. And that way there kind of takes me off the hook, kind of takes them off the hook. But their producers are bothering them and say, hey, come on, you know, we want to get ahead of this before the other, you know, competition gets the story. The other thing was I was a liaison between the town of Greece and the state liquor authority. And the reason this is kind of important was I squelch and give lectures to all the bars. And back then, we had like ten bars on the Dewey Avenue corridor from, not Dewey Stone, south of it, Barnes Street, all the way north here to Lake Ontario. So I just went periodically and, and give the bartenders and the security people lectures on proper technique, proper IDs to take, when you can shut off a person because they've been over-served. If you have a problem, how to call us, how to kind of have your own security, what to rely on, not to. But the one thing I was most proud of was we were one of the first agencies, police agencies in New York State to get a revocation on a liquor license. And the reason it's difficult, if you look at any bar, restaurant, nightclub, about sixty, forty split, and sometimes fifty, fifty is liquor versus food consumption. Once you revoke a liquor license, that person or corporation cannot apply and get it, it's kind of like a dragging thing. It's done, it's gone. So to get a judge to revoke part of someone's income is very, very difficult. They'll suspend it for thirty, sixty days or whatever, but to give a revocation. And it was unfortunate, we had a homicide at this establishment up off of Center Place Drive. And I had enough documentation that I went to the state liquor authority and could prove that they were a nuisance and a detriment to the neighborhood because we had, in one calendar year, over four hundred police calls to this establishment.
Jesus Christ.
Were annoying, annoying. Well, the neighbors didn't like it because they'd call me every morning, Jim, last night this happened, this happened. I go, I know, but it takes time, you have to build a case from the bottom up. You just can't have, you know, two or three complaints and say, hey, we want to take this person's livelihood away. And unfortunately, the homicide cultivated things so that we, I went to the state liquor authority the following week, had an emergency hearing, they revoked it, and then the establishment appealed it to the state Supreme Court. And I had a judge agree with us and revoke it. I think there was only two in the past five years in this whole state in New York. So I was very, very proud of our record keeping and the way we presented our case and that we got the revocation on a liquor license. Okay, so that's enough.
Okay, all right, hey, you know what? It's good for people to know about you and who you are. Now, if you win your election, what are your top five priorities for the town of Greece?
Well, as you can see in my card, I nailed out.
I haven't got, I gotta, I still haven't gotten mine yet.
Okay, I'll leave this one for you.
All right.
I actually have six. I'll list the six and I'll give you the top two.
Okay.
Taxes, physical responsibility and transparency, community development and revalorization, housing in safe neighborhoods, public safety, community resilience, business development, land use and zoning, and infrastructure. And out of that, I'm gonna pick the top two, and you can see they're checked. Taxes and physical responsibility and transpar- transparency. The current leadership at various town board meetings, in the opening minutes or whatever, has periodically throughout the years stated that we're in great fiscal shape. Even though they've changed audits throughout the years, they've had audits submit a report and for one reason or another, never shared it or made it public and then went and got another auditing firm and then two or three months later submitted it. So one of the first things I want to see happen if I get elected or when I get elected is I want to see a, if I think of the word, not just an audit, a forensic audit. Forensic audit is different than an audit. An audit, people come in, they look at the books, it's kind of a checks and balances. X number of dollars come in, X number of dollars went out, and is there any shortfall? A forensic goes in deeper into the books. If someone's cooking the books, if someone's switching money around from accounts to make balances look good at the end of the month. And I've researched it, there are several companies right here in Rochester, so we don't have to go out. Now, some people are gonna say, well, you know, you're gonna get the same, you know, political, good old buddy, buddy type companies. When you go out of Rochester and you hire a firm like this, one of the costs involved is now, let's say there's three people on their firm. To bring them in to look at the books, depending on where they're located, you normally have to pay for their flight. You gotta give them a hotel, you have to pay them per diem for certain types of meals, either breakfast and lunch or lunch and dinner, plus whatever the salary is that's incurred. Now, depending on how many days they're here, two days, three days, or what other problems they get in trying to find the information, they may be here for three days and then the town has to, you know, give them a week to gather up the information. So now they fly back and back and forth. So I really want to hire a firm, as I say, there's several of them here in Rochester, to keep the costs down. Because I think it's gonna be quite lengthy. And I don't know if you remember, but several years ago, when a gentleman ran for second ward, he posted that he was able to find grants and other loans and bonds that the town took out. And back then, he estimated that we were gonna be thirty to forty million dollars short. I think now it's somewhere in the fifty to sixty million dollar range. But in order to find out, we need to have a financial forensic audit. So that's one of the first.
I'm actually gonna, that's one of the questions that's upcoming, should I answer it? But I'm gonna just play off of that for a second. Now, would you, I know there's a lot of concern, like you said about the whole good old boys thing. Would you be open to, and, you know, getting quotes from out-of-town firms? Just because honestly, I mean, I have no idea what these audits cost. But for an extra ten grand in transportation and per diem fees, it almost seems like that might be worth it to keep that, to just be one hundred percent sure, or as sure as we can be, that things are being done openly? That and/or potentially, you know, having, you know, outside, you know, the, what was it, the comptroller, the state or federal, do a regular audit as well? Because I know the question that was asked was, you open to having state or federal organizations do a internal audit?
With my past experience, and after I've been retired for ten years, most of the time to get the federal government to come in is you would have had to apply for some sort of federal funding. So say during COVID, we applied for mask. And let's say we got a ten thousand dollar federal grant to buy masks. And somewhere along the line, someone took that nine thousand, other ten thousand. They bought a thousand dollars in masks, but the other nine thousand dollars, they bought pencils. So now the federal government would come in and say, oh, wait a minute, you applied for ten thousand to buy masks, you can't switch it now and buy a thousand in masks and nine thousand in pencils. The same way with the state. The state, we used to write grants to the police department, there's two types, one's for equipment. So if you want to buy vests, you want to buy Kevlar helmets, you want to buy weapons, you want to buy rifles, you want to buy vehicles, it's pretty clear and dry. You say, we have a police department, X number of people, X number of calls. We have so many in need of new vests, the last time we bought them was ten years ago, they're outdated. So we want to buy sixty of them at a hundred dollars, and that's why we need this money. When you go for positions like crime prevention, because I used to write these, they're very tedious. They're very time-consuming. So let's say you have bicycle thefts in your neighborhood. So you've got to go back sometimes three and five years and add up how many bicycles were stolen. Were they a result of somebody breaking in and stealing it? Was it being left outside in the yard? Was it being left in the driveway near the sidewalk so somebody's walking home late at night? Oh, I don't unlock ten more houses, so I see a bike laying there, so I got that. And then you've got to have a plan. Well, we plan on over the next two years, reducing the bike thefts. The first year by ten or twelve percent, the second year by an additional twelve, to bring it up to the twenty-four, twenty-five percent. So then we have to have periodic reports. Well, in the first quarter, we reduced it by X, and then the second one by X, the third one by X. So there's, there's a lot of time in reporting and that. And again, if you give money for certain things and you don't spend it, they'll come in and do an audit. But the comptroller, to my recollection, does periodic audits. But again, it's like a checks and balances type thing. They don't really dig deep because they, they do audits in almost every municipality in the state of New York. So for them to do a complete, you know, let's go through it tooth and nail, i- i- it's very time-consuming. Okay, oh, so the taxes and, um, um, doing the audit. The second part of that is closed-door decisions. We all know, they put out a working agenda, I think that's what they call it.
Draft agenda?
Draft agenda.
Yes.
On Wednesday. And I've noticed, I don't know how many, I don't know how many other people, there could be twelve, fourteen, fifteen items. Then on Thursday, somewhere between five and five forty-five, the final agenda comes out. And now it's gone from fifteen items to thirty items, or twenty items to forty items. Well, how did those extra ten, fifteen, or twenty items from Wednesday to Thursday get added? And how did they get added? Did someone call each individual board member and say, hey, we're adding these items? I don't think so. I think these board members are walking in blind, but they're told, because they're scripted, you make the motion, you second it, all in favor, I oppose, motion carried. You know, I can recite it, I don't even have that written down here. But anyways, to me, that's an indication of some decisions being made behind the scenes by a select few singular or plural individuals. And what I want to see are those agenda review meetings and the town board meetings being taped, publicized, similar to the Greece School Board, where that night, and they did it a couple of years ago. But in order to get to it, you had to go to Greece Supervisor, and the name had to be very specific, dot org, and that puts you to one page. And then you had to go through a few other groups there to get to the actual live board meeting. I've watched the school district, you go to YouTube, you click on the little button, it takes you right there. None of this diverting you here, here, and here. I've watched the county legislature, it's the same way. Um, I've watched the county legislature, it's the same way. You click on, you click on the night, you hit the little white triangle, it takes you to the meeting. And the other thing is, the quality of, of the audio is superb, you hear people. You do a great job.
Yeah, some really high-tech equipment I got here.
You have microphones, depending where you're at, sometimes you can't hear the people at the lectern there, you know? And we all know why that's done, it's done for a reason. Um, but I wanna change it, and I wanna, if we gotta hire a professional group to come in and set it up. And we gotta buy some additional microphones and have them strategically placed. And video equipment and have a professional operator there, maybe two or three cameras so you get different views. Uh, but to me, you have to be open and transparent in that way. And I want discussion. I don't wanna, at least, I'm not gonna sit there and go through twenty agenda items in fifteen minutes. Without asking a question. Example of that was several months ago, and I was kinda flabbergasted. From the Wednesday meeting to the Thursday meeting, a Bearcat vehicle for the police department was added. To me, when they said Bearcat, for some reason I had a fog moment. And I couldn't understand, cause Bearcat to me is a little police scanner, Bearcat scanners. So I researched it after the meeting. It was a SWAT vehicle, brand new, three hundred thousand dollars. Not one question was raised, where are you getting the money? How long is this vehicle gonna last? Is that the bear vehicle, or do you have extra, you know, amenities built into it? Now, that's something I think's important from a Wednesday agenda review meeting to a Thursday night town board meeting. That at least somebody should've said, excuse me, Mr. Supervisor, I've got a few questions for the chief of police. What happened? All in favor, opposed, motion carried. Three hundred thousand dollars. And I'm sure that happens more and more, because during COVID, as we all know. The first ward council person at that time would say, in the light of COVID and this and that. Let's put all thirty agenda items into one motion, all in favor, all opposed. And all thirty got pushed through without one question being asked.
Yep.
So I might get rid of that, and I know I'm going way over my time, but. And the second issue is public safety, um, police department morale. Uh, I just got my weekly or monthly community, Greece magazine, where um the current chief says, oh, morale's on the rise. Okay, well, I have a question, chief. If morale's on the rise, why do we have the most lawsuits? Against the police department, against him personally as a chief of police, his deputy chiefs of the police. And so on and so forth, if morale is so great. Cause if people are doing their job and being backed by the leadership of the police department, then morale would be at an all-time high. Why is it that we are going out of county to try to hire people? To try to hire people that just barely passed the exam with a seventy-two or seventy-three in a civil service? Cause when I got hired in eighty-six, you had to score a ninety or above. If you weren't in a ninety or above, they wouldn't even look at you, they wouldn't even talk to you. Cause first two times, I didn't score above a ninety. And I never got an interview, I never got a canvassing letter. Um, it was like I wasn't even out there. And then once I scored above a ninety, then all of a sudden they called me up, are you still interested? And they put me through the process, and I was fortunate to get hired. Nowadays, they're hiring people from Timbuktu with a seventy-one. So we're not getting good quality candidates. And I'm not trying to um put down the current people on the police department. They're in a bad position. They're working in these small departments for very minimal, small pay. Some have to buy their own weapons, some have to buy their own uniforms. And they have an opportunity now because we cannot hire people in county. And we do provide them with all the training, we provide them with all the weaponry. After three years, they make around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. They got a great schedule, it's four days on, two days off, three days on, and I think three days off. I, I can't remember.
Working tens, I think.
Yeah, and ten-hour shifts, so they get an extra fifty days off than when we used to work a four and two schedule. Um, but I would do that if I was working in a small department and Greece says, hey, make a transfer over to us. I, I would do that in a heartbeat. I mean, cause you're here, not only for the job satisfaction, but you're to provide for your family and put food on the table. Um, but anyways. Um, to improve the morale. The top leadership in the Greece Police Department needs to go, it needs to go the first month. I'm talking the chief, deputy chiefs, uh, a captain. Because they're all transfers from the city of Rochester. They think the town of Greece Police Department should run like the city of Rochester. They don't have a force of six hundred people, they don't have different sections. They had a section, it was called Creasing Two in Barnard, in the neighborhood community. They just closed it and moved everybody to headquarters on Long Pond Road. So now, how is that providing good police service when you got officers there in roll call? If there was a problem, excuse me, at Dewey Stone or anywhere along the Dewey Corridor, they were probably a minute to two minutes. Now they're coming from Long Pond Road. Even lights and siren, you've got to stop at intersections, depending on the traffic volume, Atlanta or Maiden or English Road. It's probably four, five, six minutes. In the winter time, it's probably considerable longer. So again, I don't understand it, and um they need to go. We need to reinstate on day one, the Public Safety Committee. We had it, I used to chair it for the chief. And that's bringing all the shareholders that provide services in the town together at a, a meeting at Town Hall once a month. Now, what do I mean, all the shareholders? It was everybody that during any type of emergency or situation, you would need to help you mitigate that situation. So it included the police department, it included the SWAT teams from the Sheriff's Department. Cause most of the time when you call the city, they're busy because of the high call volume and executing warrants and homicide investigations. Sometimes the state police, cause they cover three ninety in the parkways, they're in the town. The different ambulances call, cores back then, when we had Greece voluntary ambulance in Monroe. Uh, they would be there, the tow agencies, people are like, why do you want tow agencies? Well, you have an incident in an apartment and you can't get some large vehicles in there, cause they're parking. You want several tow trucks that can come in, hook them up, and move them out of the way, so now you can get maybe a ladder truck in there. Maybe you need to get a personal carrier in there, or two or three of them in there around the building to, you know, make sure. The individual doesn't escape out the front, the side, and the back or whatever. You went to school district, who's got a number of buses? If you have to evacuate a neighborhood, you have to evacuate a school, can have buses there instantaneously. Yeah, they'll say, well, you can call RTS, but if they've got so many buses out on runs. And they're busy for them to get rid of their passengers, drive in, recharge or refuel, drive out to the town. You know, you could be wasting an hour or two hours. Greece Central's got their own fueling station, the buses are right here in Mount Reed, Atlanta. All you gotta do is call the drivers in, say, hey, you gotta go here and here, we're staging here, we're gonna evacuate people. From this school area over to that one. So say you take them out of Athena, and you transport them to Arcadia. Time is cut down, you got them there. Um, you went to highway department, cause now during any type of storm, if you want plows, you want salters. If you got trees down, you need trees to be cut up, you went to highway department. I don't wanna call the dispatcher and go through some phone directory, well, for A, press S, for this guy, press B, and leave the recording. No, I wanna talk face to face to a person that can get out on landline or get on a radio and say, hey, truck four, you need to go over here. And help mitigate the situation. Cut down the red tape. In the twenty seventeen ice storm, the current leadership found itself the hard way. When all the wires went down, you had ladder road partially blocked, you had all of Mount Reed blocked, you had all of Long Pond blocked. They instituted the Public Safety Committee. And back then, I had set up, you called down a nine-one-one, you said who you are, there was a list of people authorized to activate it. They hit one button, and you send a text message or a voice message to that individual's phone or pager. Saying the Greece Public Safety Committee is being activated at, let's say, three PM. Everybody went there. Well, they did it during the ice storm, or the windstorm, excuse me. Problem was, two years earlier, the fire department did a renovation with state funding. They got rid of all that equipment. So when they said, hey, hit the button, what button? We don't have it anymore. It was turned into a bunk room for the on-duty personnel. Well, what do we do now? It took them three days to research everybody through all these different committees. Find out who was still on it and who retired, cause one of the numbers was my number. And I'd been retired for two years, I retired in fifteen. So they were trying to contact me to get this committee um together. Couldn't find me, cause I was retired. My phone was uh given to somebody else, and they're like, that's it, I don't know. And ignored it. Took them three days. So you can imagine the amount of service and time that was lost in those three days. It's critical infrastructure that you need to get these things mitigated as safely, efficiently. And as timely as possible. And they were in the dark. In fact, now I think they may still be in the dark, because they don't meet. At least when we used to meet, we didn't have everybody, so it wasn't a big boo-ha as far as fifty people. It was one chief officer, and maybe one commissioner from the fire district and or a deputy. But the person in charge sat at the table, the associate or the backup stood behind him and could feed stuff. The person at the table made the decision for that key group. And we met once an hour, we had a script, we put up what transpired, we had designated uh. Mobile pad, computer and dispatch terminals, phone lines, radios. Logistically, we had food set up that we could call certain uh venues and have like pizza subs, stuff, they had ovens there to keep it warm. Uh, beverages were brought in, you had lavatory services. And you even had some bunk services, so people that lived out of town needed a few hours of shut eye, they went back into a quiet area. Uh, cleaning and so on and so forth. So to me, those are the top two uh. With public safety. And as I said in this, all of our families throughout the town deserve to feel safe. When they leave their home. And in order to do that, you have to have a police department that you trust. Right now, you know, I'm sure.
He's looking at me when you trust, trust fart.
I've never thought in all my years that I would ever see a day where the local police department. Would allegedly. Put a surveillance device on a citizen's vehicle or vehicles. Without going through the legal proper channels. And from what I've read in these lawsuits, they did just that. So how can you trust your chief, your deputy chief? And captain, cause they're all connected, to give you a fair, complete, and honest investigation? So my thought, they all gotta go.
No comment on that one.
I don't want, I don't want for you to have to.
All right, you're gonna have to bear with me for a second, cause you actually covered a bunch of these questions. I'm gonna have to read them uh real quick and then uh.
Sure.
Uh, you know, a lot of the campaigns are focused on transparency. You've kind of talked about some of the things you do differently, especially when it comes to the uh, you know, virtual format. Obviously, we're at a uh agenda review meetings. Uh, we know that those are uh done behind closed doors right now. Open meeting law states that anytime there's a quorum of board members, it's supposed to be open to the public.
It's supposed to be published five days in advance, I believe.
Yes.
Either on a, a bulletin board at Town Hall or in their periodical. Uh, which right now, I think they use the Rochester Review.
Business Journal.
The Brazil.
Yeah.
I never heard about it before they started telling me, when I was questioning that at the town board meetings. Oh, and the clerk would read, well, published on this day.
Yeah.
Who's, who knows that?
I mean, the, one of the things that I've talked to several of the candidates uh about is. Going forward, the next administration has to be over the top transparent.
Mm-hmm. I agree.
You know, these agenda review meetings, I mean, honestly. In my mind, even if you have to split and have two town board meetings. Just take the items on the agenda and discuss them right in front of us.
Exactly.
Because I don't, I don't want, I know that most of the things on the agenda should be, are gonna be unanimous votes. It's just boilerplate BS.
I mean, there, there, there are items in the course of doing business, like lawn care maintenance, you know, commit deweeds. Some additional cleaning services, cause you add the different buildings. Uh, fee structures for certain things that are gonna be kind of routine, paying the R G N E, paying the water bill. Uh, employee benefits and employee salaries that are kinda, you know, contracts covered that. And you're, you know, you don't have a wide view that you can now uh do that.
It's boilerplate stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
I, you know, I think having, you know, all those discussions just out in the open. So at least people can, if I see a question on an agenda item, I can ask you about that item.
Yeah.
You know, and there can be that public discord, or I think that's the right word, the word I'm looking for. But everyone sees what's going on.
Well, the other thing I think is that uh, whether the town board meeting or an agenda review. As a councilperson, if you ask some questions, you may even know the answer to it. But the basic citizen that, let's just say it's the first time, and the only reason they're turning on the meeting. Is because there's some project that's maybe being discussed in their neighborhood. And they've never, ever attended or watched a town board meeting. So we can't assume that everybody that's listening in or attending knows. Like you and I go to most of the meetings, therefore we know how things are run. We know the answer to the question, but you need to answer it so the novice, the first time person says. Wow, I never thought of that. That's a good idea. I'm glad, you know, my councilman's working for me. Cause they're asking these, even their, their very basic questions, that's how transparent. But when you run through things, like why coyote there in twenty minutes, people are like, geez, how did this get through? Who approved that? Where's the money coming for that? You know, it's, it's very simple, I think.
Um, what public oversight ideas are most practical to improve transparency and accountability?
Um, well, again, you know, having the meetings, having the decisions in public. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I would like the bid process. They put items out for bid, and then they say, okay, next Tuesday at two o'clock, we're gonna open the bid. Well, first of all, how many people can drive over to Town Hall to the clerk's office? And watch her or him open the bid, read the bid aloud, and, and see, you know, who they recommend to, to um get the bid? So I would like to see, they can have them submitted anytime, they can have them submitted on New Year's Eve as far as I'm concerned. But I want them opened at an open town board meeting. So everybody gets to see, one, who's submitting bids, what is the bid? And then let the town board make a discussion on it. Instead of, again, to my knowledge, they receive them at two o'clock. The clerk says at two thirty, so-and-so was the lowest bidder, we're gonna go with them. The other thing I would like to see, and I don't know all the legalities, but I think. You can disqualify a bidder if you. you can disqualify a bidder if you have had some sort of past questionable work done with them. For example, I think we could disa, not, we would have to allow them to bid, but we could disqualify some of the contractors with the community senior center project. Because there was questionable billing practices, questionable accounting for supplies, and so on and so forth. So I would like to see that. And again, that would have to go through the legal department and make sure that we do it on the up and up. But I think if contractors knew that they could be, and maybe you can only do it for six months, maybe you can only do it for a year. I don't know. Some of them we'd have to research. But if it is possible, we could implement that. I think, one, that would show the people that we're serious about bidding out contracts now. That if people are somewhat shady or questionable or stool receipts. I can't remember. I must say it was over a hundred and fifty change orders in the community center.
More than that.
Or more than.
Six million dollars worth?
Well, yeah. Well, what I'm saying is, you know, that, that's something that I think would show not only transparency, that we mean business. And it would show these contractors, hey, you know, if you've got some sort of shady bookkeeping thing, you give us a paper receipt and a back with another receipt from another company or an L L C, no, that isn't gonna fly. It better be on the legal stationery or letterhead, letterhead stationery and signed by the appropriate people and so on and so forth.
Do you feel that the public forum questions during the monthly town hall meeting should be in the minutes that are printed out at the end of the, you know, once the meeting's over?
That's a good one. I'm, I'm kind of torn with it because, first of all, I'd like to see the public forum go from three to five minutes. And depending on what the topic is, even extend it beyond that. The other thing with the public forum that I have a real problem with is the current leadership now reads this, I don't know, code of ethics morale right there. So, and almost every meeting violates it. It's not supposed to be an open dialogue. It's not supposed to be a question and answer. If you go up there and praise, oh, I called the highway department because I had a branch in my front yard and they came down the next day and removed it. Leader, oh, thank you very much. Our public highway department under the leadership of so-and-so was great and this and that. If you criticize, then you get blasted. You get called all kinds of names. You don't know what you're doing. You're just a troublemaker. You're only here to rile up everybody. You don't know the truth. You need to call me or talk to me and not at a public forum. So if you got someone up there, or let's say you got two people, but the first person was talking about pub, topic A and talked for, let's say, five minutes and stayed down. And now person B comes up and basically reiterates everything that person A said. Oh, I agree. It's a traffic problem. I agree. It's a noise problem. I agree. This, that, and how. To me, that's like duplication of effort. So I would kind of take it on a case-by-case. I wouldn't want to make it so you have to do it. But I would kind of make it so that if a town board member, after the meeting, felt that it was important enough, that he or she could contact the clerk and say, I would like the meeting, or I'd like the discussion from public speaker A transcribed into the meeting minutes.
Of course, that also goes with if everything is recorded and on YouTube, you know, it's there. It may not be in the minutes, but it's on record.
Right.
As a community, we need more transparency and better access to the council members. How can you reach this expectation? Would you offer quarterly ward meetings?
Yes. At first, I would probably try to find locations within the ward. It's easy to say, yeah, can I have a town hall? But my ward goes way down the Ridge Road. And let's face it, in the winter, January, February, March, if you have an elderly couple that has an issue, I don't think it's fair to have them drive all the way north, six, seven, eight miles, in the cold and snow and blowing winds, possibility of getting in an accident, the car breaking down, to discuss an issue. I would have, as you see on my card here, my cell phone number's listed on it. I would have my webpage available. But I think to get a larger response, you need to go out into the community. So I would try to find coffee shops or restaurants that have a spare room off to the side. And, you know, on a Saturday, not early, but let's say eleven to one, something like that, two hours. And I would also not go by myself because sometimes I couldn't mitigate everything. I would ask for a representative from the highway department. I would ask for a representative from the police department. And maybe have on-call somebody from animal control if one of those questions arose where I could call them and put them on speakerphone. And the community center, because, you know, there's so many different activities going there. You can't know everything about, or know all about everything. So I'd like to have some of those representatives available. I could call up and defer to them for some sort of advice to try to mitigate. But yeah. I think at least in the beginning, once a month, I would personally have once a month to show the residents I'm there, I'm willing to work and mitigate issues for them, no matter how big or how small. And to show them that I'm listening to their, you know, questions and concerns.
All right. So moving on to the corruption section, which is another one you've touched on a little bit. Should be an easy one to start. What's your view on freedom of speech?
I knew we were gonna get to that one.
Yeah, you got the First Amendment flag right behind you, so.
Yep. Let me see if I wrote down. Oh, yeah, I did. I knew I had some notes on that. First of all, I'm a first, I'm a believer in the First Amendment. And even though I'm a registered Democrat, I personally do not condone or agree with some of the narrative and actions that are going on on a federal level. Being a police officer, there are laws. We have to abide by it, whether you like them or not. But they're there for a reason. If you do not like them, you have a right to protest. Within the amendment, the First Amendment, and I, I wrote this down, is you can protest and quote, gathering with others in a peaceful manner.
Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof or abridging the freedom of speech or press or right of the people to peaceably, rights of people to peacefully to assemble and the participation in the government regardless of grievance.
Right. Now, over my years, we had protests. There was a couple clinics that dealt with abortion that people disagreed with at that time, and I was standing up there. But they were peaceful. The people had their signs. They stayed on the sidewalk. They, you know, marched or whatever. They did not intimidate, harass, or threaten anyone walking in or walking out of the clinics. They did not impede traffic on either West Street Road or the side street there. Vehicles coming and going out of the parking lot. And everybody spoke their piece. At the end of the thing, they put their signs away. They left. We never made an arrest while I was up there. That is First Amendment, freedom of speech. I do not condone, nor do I agree, that several years ago in the city of Rochester, when, when there was elected officials that were there saying they agreed with it. Turning over police cars, defacing them, breaking windows, destroying them, setting them on fire, throwing rocks, ice water bottles that were frozen solid, throwing pieces of concrete and rocks. To me, that's not a peaceful gathering. That's to create anarchy. That's to create violence. And those people should have been arrested and jailed immediately. Because, and then they tried to fall back, oh, no, we're protesting. We have a First Amendment right. We don't. Back in eighty-six, when I got on, there was section two forty, twenty-five, because I used to use it a lot. If you harassed, annoyed, or threatened another person, either in person, through any written communication or electronic means, it was a violation. I used to lock people up for that. But over the years, they took that and expanded it to say, oh, no, I can call you any name in the book. Let's face it, we're human. Certain names, you know, the old close, they stick some stones will break my neck bones, but names will never, no, names are hurtful. And I'm sure you've had arguments with people. I know I have, and I said things that I regretted two or three days later after I calmed down. So we have to be careful, and especially in today's social media, where people hide behind their identity and call people out and purposely incite. We got a lot of wackos out there. And it all takes us one or two people to say, you know, do this or do that, and they do it. And look at, you know, the shootings, the killings, assassination, assassination attempts. So I'm all for it. But it has to be done properly, legally, and with certain parameters.
I one hundred percent agree with you. I've got teenage daughters and I tell them, Ed, you know, if you want to go somewhere and speak up for something you believe in.
Sure.
Go for it. But the second, the first rock or whatever is thrown, get out. Because that's not, that's taking it to a new level and no.
And the other thing is, you, you can't respond, and I think a lot of this that you see on the news where you see two sides, and all of a sudden now somebody throws a rock or somebody, you know, takes a club or whatever and starts swinging it or peppers me, is they're doing it when their emotional, emotions are running high and they're angry. And we all do things that we shouldn't do when we're angry. We need to calm down, take a breath back or step back and take a breath and think before we start spewing sometimes lies, rumors that we know are, are not true about individuals. Because, you know, especially for the children today, somebody goes home on Facebook and writes a very disparaging comment about a girl over a fight with her boyfriend and maybe something that happened. When I was a resource officer, you know how much problem or how many problems it started? That somebody would go home and say, hey, I saw your boyfriend making out with the cheerleader up in the bandstand or in the bandroom or in the hallway. And now the girl gets all emotional and is crying and sobbing and says to her friend, I'm gonna kill myself. So now she calls the police. We don't know where she's calling from. And now you gotta start backtracking. It takes several hours to find out. It all started over a vicious rumor. So we gotta be careful.
I, as I said, I one hundred percent agree. Okay, so we went over the audits. Would you support requiring town and or G P D staff to talk to investigators to find out the extent of damage done by, well, the current administration at this point? There are investigations, whether they're either law enforcement or just, you know, new administration wanting to ask questions and figure out what's going on?
First of all, yes. With the caveat. Again, I've retired ten years. But I know that there are contracts, collective bargaining agreements. And in some of them, it outlines who you can talk to, when you can talk to, who has to be present. Sometimes a union delegate or sometimes the union attorney. If there's a possibility of charges, what those charges may or could be. So I would want to make sure that all those I's are dotted and, and T's are crossed. Another bargaining chip sometimes is someone will say, okay, I can give you person A, B, and C, but I want full immunity to give that to you.
Right.
In that case, there has to be some sort of an analysis. Is it worth giving full immunity? Because this person may have done something equally damaging or more damaging than your person you're going after. So that's where you have to kind of do a checks and balances and say, is the end result worth giving of this? Or, yeah, we'll give you certain immunity up to this level, but from that point on, no. So it's kind of like a yes and no. And then okay, we'll say, well, you know, make up your mind. But it's, it's, it's tricky when you're dealing with unions and you're dealing.
No, it makes sense.
Contracts and lawyers. I was involved in a lawsuit many years ago. And at one point, I was at a meeting and there was fifteen lawyers all in the conference room. One group was working on this. One group was working on this. One group was working on this. And one group was working on this. So someone would come up and say, let's do this. Do you think I could get two out of the fifteen to agree? Because one would say, we can do it this way. And the other would say, no, we can't. I just said, are you kidding me? You know, I'm paying you guys big money and you can't come up with two of you. I don't want, you know, a majority, just two to agree. And they always come up with a reason not to agree, so. But anyways, I would be forward looking into it and were applicable, agree to it.
Now, what is your position on the potential conflict of interest when town officials or multiple town officials and the town itself share legal representation as defendants in the same case?
I think it should be illegal, to be honest with you. I know why it's done. It's because if I hired lawyer A to sue you and then I hire lawyer A to protect me, lawyer A cannot give any incriminating evidence that I maybe gave them against you. Lawyer-client privileged communication. They'll call any notes or documents or product. So it's done to shield so that you really can't get to the bottom. If that was me running town board, whoever's involved in lawsuit A would not be representing the town in any way, shape, or manner. If you're involved in a lawsuit, that automatically excludes you, in my opinion, from representing the town board member, the town board, or any town employee. There's more than enough attorneys. And if you, if you run out all of them in Monroe County, you go to an adjoining county and find an attorney that practices and is willing to take the case. I'm sure between Rochester, Syracuse, and Buffalo, you're gonna find somebody that's very reputable and will do a fine, if not sometimes a better job, and get proper representation. So therefore, there's no conflict of interest. There's no protection of using lawyer-client privileged communication.
Just kind of a follow-up to that. Would you be open to canceling the indemnification agreement the town has? Paying the legal fees and selling the cost for Carly Bolanos and Cass Morales investigative services for their part in the investigation and placing tracking devices on the Bakwens and my family vehicle?
Yes. Again, with a caveat. I don't know because I've never read the contract between them. I'm just going on personal knowledge and involved in lawsuits. That I am going to go on a limb and guess that there is some sort of clause written into that that if it's revoked or repealed or rescinded in any way, shape, or form, that there are damages that will be paid to the attorneys, either in the. Either an attorney's fees, or let's say you got a thousand dollar judgment, that they're gonna say, well, you gotta pay back the thousand dollar judgment, and a punitive fee of five hundred or a thousand dollars, making it two hundred dollars now. Because in most civil contracts, uh, they have a, um, what'd I think? Do not disclose.
Oh, non-disclosure.
Non-disclosure agreement. And knowing the leadership, I'm sure there is things written in there. And in that case, I personally would have to look, what's it gonna cost to get out of it versus letting it expire? Cause I'm sure it's, it's not written forever, or it has to be renewed periodically, or reviewed. And then at that time, you could do it. So if there's a year left on it, and it's gonna cost you ten to twenty thousand dollars to break it now in a lawsuit, maybe I would say, okay, let's pay it, let's wait for the year, and then at the end of the year, get rid of it.
Basically, look at the kind of details, you gotta read it.
And find out what's in, cause I'm sure, I'll bet the tea leaves, that they've got some sort where they're gonna get money if it's revoked, rescinded.
Yeah, it's looking at a cost, uh, cost analysis and the legal.
Find out the, the best way for the taxpayers to get out of it without, you know, gain, cause then remember too, if you get dragged into court, the town's gotta pay for it. They gotta pay for their attorneys to represent them. You know, some of these lawsuits go on three, four, or five years. I don't know, I've not looked at any bills. I'm guessing some of these lawyers doing this at tens of thousands already in legal fees, if not more.
Millions a year. If we, we've calculated it right, several million dollars a year.
Yeah. So, I mean, do you pay up now, or do you pay later? And then remember, if you sue them to get out of that, if they appeal, appeals can go on for two or three years. And then there's different levels of appeals. So you could get a judgment today, ten years from now, you're still in the appeals process.
Yeah.
You know, and remember, all those things are costing money. The clock's running, it's kinda like taking a taxi. The meters keep spinning, and some of these attorneys don't care because you pay me now, or pay me later.
Right. All right, so let's see. Uh, you definitely answered your, uh, assessment of the, uh, current GPD's leadership.
I think that's.
Definitely made your opinion pretty clear on that one. Um, here's, here's a good one. Uh, do you, uh, support allowing GPD officers to report misconduct or illegal activities within the department without repercussion or demotions?
Yes. I mean, let's face it, we're all human. We all make mistakes. We hope that we can learn from our mistakes. What is, uh, I was an acting sergeant for several times, and as a supervisor, if you don't know what's going on, how can you take corrective measures? And I'm not saying you fire everybody. Sometimes it's training. They need to go, let's say you get in a number of car accidents, and they happen on your days off, so you really don't know about it. But the other sergeant says, hey, you know, uh, Joe Smith last shift hit two mailboxes backing out of driveways. And the day before that, while you were off, hit a parked car in an apartment complex. Okay, so we need to get to training center and get some remedial training and, and driver training. So unless you know what's going on, and I'm not saying you gotta be a, a, a busybody and micromanage, but if there's issues that arise, um, you need to deal with it. Because if officers covered up, they're putting their lives in jeopardy, they're putting the lives of citizens in jeopardy. Cause if you have an officer out there conducting themselves in questionable judgment situations, especially in the heat of the moment, you need to know about that. And sometimes maybe it's just the counseling. I know, I lost my wife in twenty thirteen to cervical cancer. And I know I got called in to the chief at the time, uh, cause I went on a few calls, and I kinda like lost my cool. And he goes, you know, what's going on? And I said, chief, not to make excuses, I says, but I'm dealing with my wife. Uh, we just found out it's stage four, she doesn't have long to live. I have two teenage daughters in high school. Um, there was some issues at the police department, I says, you know, I can't talk to people here. Father Bradshaw and Mother Sarah, who just got transferred to St. John's in Fairport, um, I really had no one to talk to. And I says, you know what, I, I'm coming in, I'm trying to do the best, and I gotta go on this stupid call with this neighbor's complaining about that neighbor's kids kicking a ball and going through her little tulip garden. I go, and after two or three of them, dealing with what I'm dealing, I'm like, are you kidding me? You know, call us or something real. You know, somebody's out front of your house threatening you, yeah, call me. The kid's kicking a ball, don't bother me with that petty stuff. He's, well, you know, you really shouldn't be talking to people that way. I go, but you know what, you can only take so much before things boil over and, and start. And then afterwards, he transferred me off the road for a while. But, um, yeah, I, I, I think that, um, people need to keep people apprised. And again, other people on the other side, and other officers was, oh, well, you know, you want them to rat you out? No, I don't want them to rat you out. I don't want anybody to be a rat. Cause in my opinion, a rat looks for any little thing to get advantage with their boss. I'm saying, I want people to make supervision and leadership aware of judgmental situations where the wrong decision or wrong action was taken. Because this person can easily correct it with some training, a counseling memorandum, or maybe riding with an experienced officer for a shift or two, just to get that kinda re-jump, restart in their, their system. Maybe they just, you know, they've been working the sector, um, too long, they got complacent. They keep going to the same house for the same problem, and resolving it. Now, two weeks later, back again, and now two weeks, and. So maybe they need to change the scenery. Instead of working the ridge, they need to work land row. Or instead of working Edgmere, they need to go down and work the ridge, or the east side or the west side. You know, just something to give them, something different. Or instead of having calls every night, when you got some extra cars, put them on a traffic detail. Put them on special attention somewhere, going around checking businesses for burglaries and stuff like that. Um, you know, change it up a little bit, give it a little variety.
All right. Would, did you be willing to review disciplinary actions taken by GPD officers, uh, or taken against GPD officers and town employees? And consider, considering, consider, excuse me, adjusting or reversing the actions if it was illegal, unjustified, or retaliated, uh, retaliatory? Uh, specifically looking at, uh, cer- uh, recent examples where individuals were, uh, denied benefits, denied pension, decertified, investigated based on charges that were, uh, either made up, or, uh, the evidence against them was deemed illegally?
Yes. Um, everybody deserves, you know, upon their, their day in court. And especially if you've been retaliated against for one reason or another, and now that, um, is affecting you, especially when benefits are taken away, and if you're the sole provider for the family, and now your children, uh, don't have the necessary healthcare, so they can't go and get the necessary vaccinations they need, cause we all know germs hibernate in schools. And, um, so, anything that I could do, uh, to mitigate that, I'd be open for. And again, I don't wanna see that be a, a judgment of one person. I don't wanna see just the personnel director, or just the chief of police. I would like to see a panel of the personnel director, the chief of police, uh, maybe a town board member or two, maybe even the supervisor in the town board. But it shouldn't be left to one person. It should be a panel, uh, I don't care how you make it up, I don't care what the number is, but just so that there's a proper review, and maybe change the panel every year. So this year, it's the chief, next year, it's the deputy chief, and the deputy supervisor, and then the next year, it's town board member, A and B. Uh, so you get new perspectives, new ideas, uh, looking at things. Cause again, the longer we say things, we become complacent. And again, I don't wanna see the same person. They get brought up the first year, now the second year, and all of a sudden, everybody says, oh, it's him again. He's coming in, oh my God, I don't wanna deal with this. So if you change the personnel, you don't get the continuity, but you get a new perspective, and you don't have some of the bias already, that, hey, this guy's a dirty cop or whatever. So, but yes, I'd be all for that.
Uh, last one with the, when it comes to the, uh, GPD is, are you in favor of officers, uh, wearing body cameras?
Yes. We had them. We had seven, back when I was in, in the mid nineties. There was seven at precinct one, seven at precinct two. Um, it was a test program. The reason is, the policy wasn't written. It was copied from another department. And some of the policy had no bearing on the residents of the town in Greece. The other thing is, we weren't prepared for storage, and we weren't prepared for disseminating, like, if a person, say you come in, you wanted, uh, body camera from an accident two weeks ago. Well, how long did we have to keep it? Could we give it to you? Could we give it to your attorney? Was there fear? There wasn't a lot of research, it was like, hey, body cameras, we'll be the first ones. We went out and bought fourteen of them. And after a couple months, they were collecting cobwebs and that. And I have some personal views with recent police involvement, that I think the leadership didn't want their officers or command staff wearing it. Uh, because if a certain chief got into a questionable accident on three ninety, and if there was body cameras there, uh, I think we would have had a clearer picture. And I think for that reason, the leadership said, hey, nobody's asking for it, nobody's demanding that, so let the bear sleep. Uh, but that could have put so much question and amb- ambiguity out there, because we could have had at least three different body camera views from the lieutenant, the sergeant, and the officer, as to what was happening, what was the demeanor of the chief at the time. So, I'll leave it at that.
All right, on to assessments.
Here we go.
Uh, what's your cur- uh, what's your position on current property assessment process in Greece? And do you need, uh, believe reforms are needed? And, you know, what steps do you think, would you take, or do you think should be taken?
Yes, 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 yes. Um, I think they're way out of kilter. I know my house went up over forty thousand dollars in two years. Um, and again, I think it's a shell game that's being played, because when you go into town hall, especially during tax time, you see a big banner, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. I owed your taxes. Complete, total fabrication.
I won't sign. Come on.
Because a key word is left out. Tax rate was lower. So instead of paying five twenty-five last year per thousand, you're paying five twenty-four. Was the tax rate lowered? Yes, it was. But if your valuation went up ten or twenty thousand dollars, simple math, you're gonna pay more in property taxes.
Thank you. I've been saying that for three years.
Yeah, and why do you think, who was it just recently, post, I think it was a running point? Hadn't had an assessment townwide in like ten or twelve years, and they're gonna do that, twelve years? I got assessed three years in a row, because what would happen is, to offset his budget shortfall, he needed money. And in order to get money, he had to raise, Dick Bart, I don't know how old he is.
Eighty-nine, late eighties.
Yeah. Do you really think he's got it there to do all that stuff? Um, I don't. I, uh, I looked up this week in preparation of this, that there is the New York State Board of Assessors. And I didn't copy it all down, but to be an assessor, um, you have to have certain criteria, and you have to take a test, you have, you have so much continuing education, and be certified by them. They actually have an employment page there. So if you're looking for an assessor, you can say, hey, this is the town in Greece, we're looking for an assessor, pay raise is between ninety and a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and we would like you and maybe two other people to do a townwide assessment. I think that would be the most fair, um, because Dick Bart, I know years ago, was involved in a, um, committee, a political committee in the town. And he served on it for many years, uh, until there was some questionable action taken. And then he left and went up to the Ridge Road Fire District, and got a job up there. Well, then, the tur- current leadership, uh, because of all the assessments, with Charles Swab, and Kodak, and the kickback, uh, and so on and so forth, and they needed somebody, so the current leadership, to my knowledge, because when he was an assemblyman in the town, knew Mr. Bart from the political filigee, and reached out to him. So, uh, yeah, we need a whole townwide assessment. I think that it's way out of whack.
Yeah, exactly. Um, development. You're, you're making my life easy, cause you're asking, you're answering the entire section with one shot for me. How would you plan on balancing development and protecting green space?
I know that several, several years ago, and I know the town can do this, cause they did it, is you can put a temporary hold or freeze on new development until you do a townwide assessment of current vacant or, um, properties that are available to be redesigned once a new owner took ownership. For example, uh, you have the old Geisler School Building at the corner of Long Pond in Atlanta. Now, if somebody's looking for square footage that is roughly close to that, you have parking there, it's near a major intersection. So why cut down trees and bushes somewhere to put up a same-sized building? Yeah, it's newer, but you could probably demolish that, or refurbish it to fit your needs. Especially if it was for, say, a lawyer, lawyer offices with two or three partners, maybe a tax accounting firm, um, dentistry with, you know, one or two dentists, something small, something that's not large, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five people. Um, there was the, the old bank next to Tim Hortons on Mount Reed that's at vacant, but I think something's going in there now. Um, the Roydate up on West Ridge, I don't know if that's gotten a new tenant yet, cause I know that's been vacant. There's, I'm sure there's a lot, but you'd have to send somebody around and mark it down. So I would wanna have a townwide assessment and see what's available. And before somebody starts tearing everything, I mean, look at the Domain Hotel, that historic building, and that's been torn down, I can't even remember, ten years, I think, or longer. Then why? Oh, everybody needs your creation, we're gonna take, and now I'm hearing again that there's rumbling to Flynn Atlanta, they wanna clean the woods out there and put something up there. Um, which now, with this proposed Delta Sonic, um, I don't know what your opinion is of that. You've got a car wash, you have a gas station, yeah, it does have sixteen pumps, but I think it's way too big of a development with the senior citizens in North Hampton there, the Montessori school, daycare and stuff, McDonald's, cars coming in. Now you wanna have a car wash, you wanna have detailing, you wanna have a convenience store, and sixteen gas pumps. Come on. That road, that little side was not situated to handle it. And I think there needs to be a big review of that project before it goes forward. So I'm willing to propose a freeze until we can get our grasp on what's going on, and see how much greenage do we have. If we're like seventy or eighty percent, we only got ten or fifteen percent. If we use half of that, and we're down to seven, ten percent, no. So, I know businesses aren't gonna like it, but I'm under the belief, if there's a will, there's a way. So if you want to bring your business into town, and you want to build a brand-new building on something, because you want to have a brand- there's a way of getting around that, and still finding some sort of suitable location for it, um, and putting it there.
Um, like, uh, let's see. Now, what would, what criteria, criteria, Jesus, I can't talk today. Will you use for appointing, uh, planning and zoning board members, uh, to ensure? And will you, will there be an effort to ensure that there's members of both major parties on those boards?
Yes, yes. As far as the criteria, I would ask for interested parties, whatever board, to submit a resume with their professional education, so, and zoning, I know nothing about zoning. So to read, read the twenty or fifty pages on zoning, BR one to SR two to this and that, I would want someone that doesn't work for the town, but maybe works in another municipality. Or maybe got a degree in zoning and that on the board. I don't care if they're Republican, Independent, or whatever. I want people to have knowledge. The way it is now, the current leader picks friends and family planning, and puts people on, because I've gone to some of those meetings. Uh, one, I went, because I didn't agree with Tractor Supply going in, in where it is on Lada Road. And I'm, I walk in, because I, I never had, I'm like, these people are on the board? They know nothing about zoning. I brought up inconsistencies, I brought up problems with town board meeting minutes. They all sat there, yeah, yeah, we agree, we agree. Chairman goes, after two meetings, well, um, yeah, Jim, you did a lot of work, you, you brought a lot of questions forward, you showed a lot of, thanks a lot. Uh, any questions? Two little minor questions, all favor, aye, motion carried. It was a done deal. It was a done deal. Um, so again, I'm all for it, um, but I want to put people on the boards that have some sort of knowledge and experience. I don't want to put, and, and I don't want to be disparaging to any type of, of occupation. But let's say a school teacher. I love school teachers. We need them. What does a school teacher know unless they teach economics, or they teach building? Let's say that they're a history buff. Zoning board? No. I want somebody that's got some experience in construction and real estate, you know, that knows a little bit about what's going on.
Um, do you support bringing back the Greece Environmental Conservation Board? And taking a hard look at the, uh, uh, so they can, taking a hard look at, uh, being, the town being the lead, uh, agency on the implementing seeker?
I don't know if you need a board, because I'm, I'm trying to think how many, uh, environmental protection reviews you give a year, a calendar year. I don't think it's up there that, like, twenty or thirty. I think it's probably less than a handful. What I would like to see would be hiring two part-time professionals that when the SEQ hours are published and sent to the town, that we could forward it to them on a per diem basis. Say a hundred dollars per review, and if it's real lengthy, a hundred and fifty. And have these two professionals that aren't involved in the town, review it, and then at the next town board meeting, uh, because I've read some of them, and you gotta be like a Philadelphia with the where is, two froms, you know. I'm not a chemist. Uh, last time I was close to a biology class, or chemistry, was over forty years ago, and I'm sure terminology, and things have changed. Uh, so I would rely on their expertise and knowledge to review it, and then, you know, raise whatever questions, and rely on them to give a professional opinion.
Um, let's see. So, kind of touched on this, but, uh, you know, or this idea, but, uh, malls across, you know, all across the country are dying. You know, there's been problems at mall up here in Greasridge. Uh, what would your plan be for our mall, you know, revitalizing it, bringing it back?
Yep. Um, quite simple. If you look throughout the county, when there's been issues, uh, I'll go to Shalat Beach. After you had a brutal attack and homicide, the county legislature put, I think, two million dollars for security upgrades, additional patrol, uh, traffic pattern, and so on and so forth. When you've had certain areas in the city become problematic because of increased criminal activity, you've seen a joint task force, the city, uh, sheriff's department, and troopers going in there, uh, and dealing with it. I would enact the same thing at the mall, especially during the holiday season, uh, because that seems to be when we have the most issues. Two years in a row now, we've had to close the mall early because of improper conduct, improper behavior, uh, assaults, especially on the elderly. We have to have a perception that if you're gonna go there and create chaos and mayhem, that you're gonna be dealt with to the fullest extent of the law. So I would ask the sheriff's department and the state police, along with the Greece police, and the Greece special police unit, and RTS, to sit down and come up with a plan. So we have at least six to eight officers during the high-volume hours at the mall, especially from Black Friday on till after New Year's, that we don't have bus routes coming down West Ridge, turning into the front of the mall, and dropping off a large number of unaccompanied youths at the food court. Set it up so those buses do not go there. Yeah, you're gonna inconvenience people, but I want every resident to go there and feel safe. And the only way is you have to give a presence that if you're gonna mess up, you're gonna be arrested. I would even go so far as asking the sheriff to park one of his buses right there on West Ridge Road. So people pulling in, we see a bus, and they say, hey, what's that there for? Because if you get arrested, you're gonna be put on the bus, you're gonna sit there till the end of the store, and when it closes, then we're gonna transport you downtown and process you, and then release you. So, you know what, you think you're gonna get arrested at six and be on the street by six-ten? Not gonna happen, not in this town. And you have to have a tough presence in order to, I hate to say it, send it somewhere else. Because we've had too many problems at that mall. And I don't want to see it turn into a Runicoid mall. There's only so many things you could do with it. Part of Marketplace, they've turned into a surgical center. Um, we all know what they've done with Runicoid, with the gym, and thank God, Mr. Negrissia there from Marina Dodge, I think was the one that bought it and started turning it around. Um, so I don't know if Greece went belly up, if they would have an interest into, uh, someone redeveloping it. So I want to take care of it now and keep it there.
Uh, when considering developing green space, or in general, uh, will thought be given to, uh, to the, if the proposed business is needed in the area, and its effect on locally-owned businesses? For example, I'm sure you know the gas station at North Greece and Lada here, they want to put a gas station across the street. You know, you're destroying a locally-owned business, why would you?
Well, during the public hearing, I would hope that would be a question of the developer, the new developer, well, have you talked to the guy across the street? Well, yeah, well, what's he saying? Well, we're gonna buy him out. Okay. Or, no, I haven't talked to him, that's his problem, because I'm worried about this. Uh, I wouldn't go for that then. You know, so, again, I would hope that the proper questions would be asked of everybody at the public hearing. And that the town board members, instead of just sitting there like, mm, yeah, okay, that they would take and engage in good questioning and dialogue. Again, in an open format. And then listen to the neighbors. Remember, when I get elected, I'm elected by everybody in the second ward. If there's a project in the second ward, and there's like standing room only, which we know there's certain projects, that's what you get. Well, you know what, I hate to say it, but I'm gonna listen to them. I'm gonna listen to their concerns, I'm gonna look at it from all angles, and make a clear decision. And that's one thing I just want to say, because I know you probably won't talk on it, it's not your fault. I'm funding my campaign, campaign, I can tell, one hundred percent. I have not received one cent from any outside, because I don't want, when I'm on the town board, and there's a project, Jim, you know, I donated X number of dollars, so I really appreciate if we could get this bid for A, B, and C. No, I want to go into all these meetings and projects, free and clear of any paybacks, free and clear of showing any favoritism, and have contracts, and individuals hired to oversee it, based on their evaluation, their past quality of work, and their merits. And hire the best quality contractors, subcontractors, and individuals to give the taxpayer the best value for their dollar.
Um, will consider, this is another one you kind of, uh, touched on, but will consideration be given to reusing uh, derelict business spaces before permits are handed out for, uh, new builds?
Sure, yes, yeah. Yeah, because why take a half mile down the street, put up a brand-new building and let this vacant one, or you know, it's gonna get run down? You gotta remember that they still have to have a certain amount of heat, because in the wintertime, you know, pipes to break. You have kids or other vandals get in and set fires to keep it warm. Now you gotta worry about the building catching fire, you gotta worry about firefighters getting injured trying to put it out. For what? To save something that's in disarray? And, you know, that somebody's just abandoned, because, um, we can refurbish things nowadays. You know, maybe years ago you couldn't, but in construction now, you can make an old building look like brand-new, uh, and a lot cheaper, too.
Yep. Um, alright, now we're gonna kind of get into some of the, uh, more miscellaneous variety questions that we had. Ten half, do you support bidding out trash pickup in Greece to a single company in order to ideally reduce the cost for residents?
Again, with a caveat, um, I would have to look first, because I do know there's, there was three that Cyric sold. Uh, but you got White Trash and Suburban that are locally owned. White Trash is a Greece resident, Suburban is out of Spencerport. You have Waste Management, which is nationwide. I would want to make sure that if you did that, that the David could survive, and the Goliath wouldn't take it, and put them out of business. So I wouldn't want to see Waste Management say, yeah, we'll come in and we'll underbid and undercut, because we'll bring X number of trucks from Buffalo, X number of trucks from Syracuse in these two days, and do the whole town of Greece. Meanwhile, the local business guy gets cut off at Denise, because maybe he's gotta buy five trucks. Maybe he's gotta, you know, buy some, uh, pushers and stuff for recycling and this and that, to find a new space to, to store it. So I would really want to sit down with them and look at it and find out, because I wouldn't want to cut them out of the process. But I would be all for it, if it could be done on a fair and equitable business, where a big corporation wouldn't come in and kind of put the small, locally-owned business out of, out of business.
Um, do you support residents, uh, choosing to have, choose to have a larger vegetable garden that may be affect, uh, maybe that affects the bare ground ordinance that the town, uh, put in? Uh, residents having chickens, uh, expansion of community gardens, things of that nature?
Again, to a certain extent. Um, I think with the number of residential properties, which is somewhere in the sixty thousand or above, people should have enough land, especially the housing tracks from Long Pond West in north and south to about Mill Road. Remember, we still have some farms, we've got Green Acres, we have Van Putty's, we have the Deconic Farm and Long Pond. Um, community farms, I think, work better in a more smaller place, like in City Rochester, where you don't have, a lot of people don't drive, they're not on bus routes. So you have a couple vacant houses tore down, and now that, that community puts in a community garden. Um, here, I don't see that happening, like, around here, you know? I, I, I think we have enough space for individuals to put in for their own individual need. Um, but I'm willing to look at it, and if there's a plan or a place. And remember, too, during the, the summer months and fall, we have the farmer's market up at the mall. Where on Saturdays and Sundays, you go up there, your farmers come in, bring in their local product, and sell it out of their, you know, device pickup truck, or, uh, box truck, or whatever. And they're cutting out the middle man, so those prices are very reasonable. So I would support that, maybe moving that around, and you're at the mall there, uh, bringing it down to town hall some weekend, and putting it in the parking lot there. Or finding another space, maybe working with the school district, and allowing them to use the parking lot, you know? On the weekends, except for maybe sports events, but, you know, early on in the morning, you know, they got a ton of parking spaces there, and they're easy access off a major thoroughfare, so you don't have to worry about traffic backlog and traffic jams. Because depending on what street you put it in in the town, you know, if you put it out at Lada and Manitow, traffic out there is a nightmare, especially when Tracy and Drew's Sports Park gets up, and you don't have an advanced turn arrow, and then if they put that gas station in, this is gonna add to it, and then you got the baseball community letting out. Um, so even though there's a lot of green space out there, I wouldn't want to see any more traffic. I think they're creating for more problems out there.
Right. Um, how do you feel about Buy America, and how do you support it in your life?
Um, I support buying America one hundred and ten percent. Um, maybe years ago, when I was a kid, I would buy things for convenience, electronics, and so on and so forth. Um, all my cars, my first car was a nineteen seventy-three Dart Sport, kind of like a Starsky Hotch Red with the white stripe that went over. And ever since then, I've always bought either Dodge, Chevy, Ford. Uh, never, I won't let my daughters, when they were, you're graduating and want a car, uh, and I helped them buy it. And one rule was, you gotta let me help negotiate, and it's gotta be American. My wife always drove American, you look out now, I got Cadillac out there, GM car. Um, yeah, I just bought a new riding tractor last year, it was in Arance, because they're, uh, manufactured in, in America. Uh, I bought a new appliance, can't remember if it was GE, anyway, it was American. So I always looked to buy America first. Uh, American jobs, keep the America employee, um, employee.
Um, what would you do to, uh, improve support and service, to improve support and services for veterans in our community?
Very good question. Um, I would kind of follow the lead in meeting with Veterans Outreach in the city of Rochester. Uh, my brother was a veteran of Vietnam War, uh, who passed several years ago. Uh, several friends of mine are veterans, I know you're a veteran.
I'm not.
Oh, you're not? Oh, you were, I'm sorry. Um, and, you know, you're dealing with a unique group of individuals. Uh, when my brother came back from Vietnam, and would tell some, you know, the old war stories. Uh, he was in a helicopter, they got shot down, he spent two and a half days, kind of blacked out in the woods before they could reach him and, and extricate him and get him out of there. Uh, so I know with PTSD, some of the problems and issues he had. And, um, they have to be treated very differently. Uh, he turned alcohol, and, um, you know, lost a couple of jobs, had a couple of DWIs. And, um, it was very difficult on the family, my father crushed him, my mother was in tears most of the time, because she could see his decline and downfall. Um, so I wouldn't want to play- So I wouldn't wanna play games or mess around with people and try to counsel them. I would refer to professionals. And as I say, I would, I would contact the Veterans Outreach Center. I would also work with Post four sixty-eight there on, um, Dorsey, uh, the American Legion Post. And find out, you know, how can we help you? I would also work with our state senator Jeremy Cooney on a state level and see. Veterans programs and maybe see if there was some grants that we could get. That would allow us at the community center to bring in some experts once a month, or maybe two or a few times. That some of these individuals could go to. Just have a cup of coffee, maybe just to blow off steam. Or maybe take and have some professionals come in and give them some sort of job training. In, uh, um, knowledge on how to apply for it. So I wouldn't wanna tackle that as an individual, and I don't think, uh. That's a very delicate situation that I would rely on the professionals to come in and help. But we got a lot of room, we've got town hall, we got the community center. I'm sure we could find, uh, I know community room A and B is not booked all the time. And I don't think the veterans are gonna go in there and trash it. And, you know, bring in drinks and garbage and throw it all over the place and that. So I'd be very, um. Uh, for working, and again, working with state senator Cooney. And one little point on that. Uh, I had a meeting with him before I came here, just to discuss some things last week. And he's been in two-year term, six years now, well, then the five and six reelection next year. You know how many times our leader has called him to ask for a grant? Zero. Zero.
Really?
Zero. So if you wanna put the other individuals in, then you want someone that won't reach out to your state senator. But look at the money he's got for the city of Rochester. Over three quarters of a million dollars to renovate the Roback Community Center. Redo the lavatories, new air conditioning, new flooring.
The current administration hasn't reached out to the state for?
State senator.
State senator.
They've reached out to the Assemblyman, but he's in the minority. He doesn't have a big pocketbook. He's just got little money, oh, a health fair this week at the mall. Wow, how much does that cost him?
Interesting, cause he's always, uh, saying how, talking about how much money he's getting from the state.
He did, when Joe Roback was the senator.
I mean, recently, like he says it every year.
Nope.
Hmm.
Because I would work with Senator Cooney, as I said, seven hundred and fifty thousand at the Roback Center. I just saw the other day in the paper, uh, two hundred and like one or two thousand dollars to the Little Theater for upgrades and that. We got twenty-one parks. Why should the taxpayers be flipping the bill a hundred percent to bring in new playground equipment, upgrade it? The community center, I'm sure if we reached out, some of that could have been paid for. Cause I was on the town's traffic committee when we did West Good Road. One of, one of the stumbling blocks was our genie wanted to buy like a standard pole, wooden pole, it was kinda black and. They look like, so the Roback come at the time and got us these nice upgraded aluminum poles with the little designs and that. He come up with the money for that. There was a few other design features that we wanted, he come up with the money for that. Uh, I know the American Legion wanted a, uh, elevator for their dolly service, he come up with the money for that. So you gotta work with the team that's in power, cause they've got the pork barrel money. And you gotta reach out to them to find out when, they're just not gonna say, hey, I got a million dollars, you want it? No, there's a process, you gotta apply for it, you gotta call them. Hey, what, what bills are coming up next month as far as their grants that we can apply for? We can get safe grants to furnish equipment for the police department, we can buy equipment for the highway department. We should kinda talk to them.
Hmm.
So.
Um. There any, uh, town services that you would? Would combine or look into combining, combining with the county in order to save money?
Yes. Um. Anything, first of all, you gotta make sure that whatever services you're trying to combine. The county either has the personnel or the equipment nearby, for example. Let's say we wanted to divide up some of the parks, cause they do have Canal Pines Park up there that they maintain. So, uh, we got Carter Park just down the street there. So, and then we got the one skipping me at Ridgeway in Long Pond, that park out there. So, um, as long as we're bringing in equipment to mow those parks. Maybe we could do an agreement where they would mow our parks. And reduce costs, so now instead of us sending five or six college students during the summer to mow them. We could cut down and maybe have three or four college students. And take two of them and divert them to the Spray Park or the Community Service Building to help with programs there. Um, so that's one thing. I know we have an agreement, I believe, the same that we have with the state, so county roads, we plow and salt them.
Yes.
So they're not sending a, a lot of plows out here. Um, so I think if we sat down and put our heads together, there's probably some other things that we could consolidate, but I'd be willing. And with Jeff being the ex-deputy county executive, and I've worked with Adam on, on several projects before in the past. Uh, to me, that's like a no-brainer. Again, you gotta sit down with these people, and you gotta talk to them, and be willing to negotiate. Um, fair and equitable agreements. And not try to, uh, take advantage. And the reason I say that is, the other thing I would do to instill safety. Is reinstitute the School Resource Officer Program at no cost to the Greece Central School District. Because it was there, I coordinated for many years, I was one of the first S R Os in two thousand and six. Kind of on a test case, it was Arcadia and Olympia. And we just developed that program. And when I retired, we had four schools, four major high schools. And we had four part-time officers for a total of sixteen officers there at various times. But someone got greedy, and after I left, started charging the school district. And last I know, for two officers, went at over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Yeah, charged them for everything, every time they were. The other thing, the officers at roll call learn what's going on in the neighborhood that they perform. The security people that they're working there now, you think, and nothing against the director. But he's got a lawsuit against the town, which is right and just. If you think he can call up the captain, or he can call up the lieutenant, hey, was anything important last night around Athena? Or Olympia, or I'm hearing that there might be a big party this weekend at this house. You think that they're gonna give him that information when he's got a lawsuit? So the people working for him are kinda flying deaf, dumb, and blind, yeah, they still got some friends. They not, may not be hearing the information firsthand. Um, they may not be spreading it, you know, they may be writing it down on a form. Submitting it by the time it goes to staff, it gets reviewed, it gets approved, it gets copied, it gets disseminated. Disseminated to the rank of, two or three days could go by. When you're the officer sitting in roll call, you can turn to the guy in that sector where the party is and say. Hey, um, Ryan, you know, in your sector, Frye and Lloyd, there's supposed to be a big party at this address. Maybe you should go and pay the parents a, a courtesy call, and maybe they should change your plans, or have somebody come and stay with their children. You know how many times, one instance in the town, when I was coordinating school resource. We had a party during Crown Week at a house out west of Long Pond. Over forty thousand dollars in damages. Broken beer bottles, golf clubs smashed into kitchen cabinets. Smashed into aluminum refrigerators, freezers, glass broken bottles, browned into the flooring. And over twenty thousand dollars in jewelry was taken.
Oh.
So you can have a lot of damage if you don't know what's going on and you don't disseminate it.
Uh, this one, would you, or be, will the Volunteer Historic Preservation Commission be reinstated? Apparently it was disbanded about ten years ago.
Yes, and, yes it was. And it was all over, in my opinion. A petty difference between their leadership and the town's leadership. So I'm gonna take and cancel it. And another one was Barnard Park. Barnard Park, they've been a park for I don't know how many years. Police Athletic used to use it for softball, one of the fields was named after Jerry Fallon. Because of the disagreement at the bands at Barnard. The week before the lease agreement was to be signed. The Barnard. Player Department, which owns it, cause they have three entities, you got the district, the department, and the exents. They get a letter from the town, we're not extending the lease or renewing the agreement. So they had no money in the budget to maintain it, cut it, strike the fields. They had no money to go out and buy the equipment. And they were kinda like left, in left field to scurry around and try to find an independent contractor. They were able to do it, but now, you talk about providing services, here's a park in the middle of a neighborhood. You take it away. Same thing with National Night Out. Dewey Stone had the biggest National Night Out. But because certain people couldn't run it. And couldn't go down there and say, I want this this way, and I want this this way. Because the neighborhood's, no, we've got a private organization, we're gonna run it. They decided to move it from there and say, okay, you can meet, but you're gonna meet at town hall. That defeats the whole purpose of a neighborhood watch. It's neighbors walking their neighborhood, getting to know one another, getting to know what vehicles should be parked in the driveway. Getting to know if contractor vehicles are theirs or they're having worked under their house. There's little things that you can pick up indirectly by just talking to your neighbors and walking your neighborhood. So taking people from Dewey Stone and making them walk town hall campus. Did absolutely positively nothing accomplished. So do we have a National Night Out? Not that I know of, I haven't got any notices.